All those in favor.
Hi.
Oh. Got someone coming out, might be Damon's. Nope. Alright.
Description is pretty good.
Turn on the, yeah. Turn on the public hearing, uh, open the public hearing for the site plan for ten Halford Avenue West. Ladies, if you'd like to come up.
Have to read the ad, please.
Yeah, I'm going to. Give them a chance to sit down. Okay, in accordance with MGL chapter forty, section eleven, notice hereby given that a special permit public hearing will be held on Monday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four at six P M. In the town hall, twenty Main Street, consider a site plan review submitted by Jessica Smith to expand change license to a large, large group license. Excuse me. Large group license, um, for the family daycare. Uh, probably located ten Halford Avenue West, Minna, Mass. Uh, and is owned by Dangio Inc. of ten Halford Avenue West. And it was in the, uh, Milford Daily News on five thirty-one and six seven. Um, okay, ladies, um, we did, uh, actually, for those of you who haven't been seen, uh, the Board of Health, Jack, uh, had a discussion with them. And the Board of Health has said the septic isn't, is, uh, big enough to fit the additional, so. Um, at this point, um, I don't see anything that, that would stand in the way unless, uh, given opportunity to community, unless you guys have any questions?
I have a question, um, I, I think you'd mentioned this at the, the last meeting, but I, I forgot in my notes, um, just how, how many kids are you expanding to?
Fifteen, we're at ten right now with a, a large family and we're expanding to fifteen for a large group.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I, you know, I, I monitored your, uh, your parking situation this week as I was driving by. And it doesn't look like it's gonna be an issue, although I did see a couple guys parked on the lawn today.
Yes, getting work now. We had mulch delivered, yes.
Oh, alright.
So we, we moved out of the way.
Okay.
Is fifteen the max number that's allowable under what you're seeking, or is that the minimum?
That.
It's.
At that location, at that location, that's gonna be the max, right? We could possibly go higher, I don't know, but it would be up to E E C allowing us with square footage, but that's the max that I'm looking for, for just camp, camp kids.
Okay. If you do go high, you'd have to come back.
Come back to you guys, yeah, um, but I'm hope, I don't plan on it. Because we'd also have to deal with septic and all that to make sure, all that stuff, yes.
Yeah, you'd have to go back to the Board of Health too.
Yep.
Um.
I've got another question.
Sure.
I, it's, I think I'm gonna play the, the new guy card here, but I was, I was reading through, um, the zoning bylaws and on the table of uses, there's a note for items twenty-five and twenty-six, which are for family daycare and large family daycare, I don't know if that's the proper designation.
Yeah.
But the note on it said that the, um, total number of children should not exceed six for, uh, family childcare. And then for, uh, should not exceed ten for the large family care, so I was just curious how we're reconciling that.
So right now she is a large family daycare and has ten children.
Yeah.
Alright, and with that, I, I don't know if we ever had to go through planning board or anything like that, no one has ever sent anything and whatnot, so I know with large groups through E E C, the state, they recommend us going through the planning board to get permission to run a business out of our house, so E E C and family are two different organizations, largely technically, large group, large group and family are two different.
Right.
Yes, and we have two different licensers, um, but with family, you can run it out of a house, large group, it needs to be, um, general residential where you can run a business out of your house, which our street is zoned out, or commercial.
Right. And that's the difference, I think the, the, that implies to, that applies to running it out of your home, where this is actually in, in the, the business residential, which Halford Avenue West now falls into, they're just running a business.
Okay.
So.
Makes sense.
The clarification, so they, they can actually go to a larger size, because actually.
Something that what you were reading, Eric, was pertaining to residential zoning.
Yeah, and it, 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 what, what's implying is running out of your home, this isn't actually an in-home business, this is a business.
It'll be number twenty-four instead of twenty-five and twenty-six.
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
Family childcare and large family childcare, but number twenty-four is an exempt childcare facility.
Gotcha.
And that one is a business.
That, that's helpful, thank you.
Okay. Um, other than that, I'll take questions from the community, unless any other board members have any questions? No. No questions? Alright. Nope.
I got nothing.
Alright, then, uh, if, uh, if that's it, uh, I'll, uh, look for a motion from the board.
You need to, okay, yeah.
All those in favor? Hi. Alright, we'll consider that done.
Yeah.
Jack.
Bill, you'll need to, you'll need to close the public hearing.
Yes. I usually do that next year.
That's a work.
Uh.
Totally, yeah, yeah, thank you very much.
Second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Alright. Alright.
So, we'll write it up and let Bill know when it's ready for signature.
Yep.
Thank you, Jack. That one's done. Okay, on to the next one. Um. Hi, eighty-one P for Misco Springs. Um. Is is this one the correction?
Yes.
Yeah, I shouldn't say eighty-one P on there, Bill, but it's.
It shouldn't.
It's the correction.
I made an error reading form H last week, they had originally requested lot releases for which ones was it last week, Fred?
Twelve A.
Twelve A?
Thirteen and forty.
Twelve A, thirteen and forty, we had only voted to approve
Twelve A.
Uh, twelve A, uh, I need a vote of the board, uh, we need a motion to, uh, allow for what was it?
Um.
Thirteen and forty?
Thirteen and four, and forty.
Thirteen and forty. So I yeah, lot releases for twelve A.
Alright, so I'm making a motion to approve the, uh, lot release for twelve A. What was it, thirteen and forty?
Forty, right. Thirteen and four.
Thirteen and forty. Lot releases.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
All those in favor? Hi. Okay, consider that matter taken care of. And now we have additional requests, I see. Um. Might as well just take care of all, all these at one time, yeah. Um. So additionally, uh, I assume you're looking for a lot release for sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-eight?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
And that's all, uh, on, uh, Ross and Farm Road at the end of the cul-de-sac?
Yes.
Okay.
Everything's paved.
Everything's paved, it was paved the last Friday.
Okay.
Yeah, alright.
So everything's paved, that's really, that's the only thing that we really was.
Right. Request, yeah.
They don't have to go four-wheeling to get to their house.
Yeah. Alright. Yeah, Jack.
Um, Fred or, or Bill, you'll know, I don't, because this is older than since, certainly since I've been here. What are we holding on this?
We're holding two million.
It's updated, I think, that.
We're holding, yeah, we're holding two million.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we're well covered as far as the, uh, bond.
Don't you give me those off to view.
So, um, unless anybody has any further questions from the community or any board member have any further questions, um, if, um, anyone who hasn't been up into that, that development, uh, it's a large development and they're moving steadily along to complete it. So, uh, the sooner you guys get that done, I'm sure the neighbors would appreciate it.
Oh, I'm sure. I got it right.
Use spots sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-eight, Ross and Farm Road.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Alright. Alright, and you have a eighty-one P for?
Yeah, I, I was coming in with an eighty-one P, but we weren't able to complete the plan, it's time for Jack to give it a review.
Okay.
Uh, we are working through some, it's a tough perimeter to, uh, nail down.
Alright.
So, so we'll be in the next meeting, we'd like to get on the agenda for the, uh, what is it, July?
Fifteen.
July fifteenth. Yeah, it's, we're not having the one the first week, so.
And you're good. So this will be the, this will be where Gil, you'll put him on from just talking now, or do you need him to call you? You're gonna get him on the meeting?
That's the Benson, Butler and Vincent Road, correct?
Yeah.
We'll just continue this line, this, uh, agenda item, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
And make sure I get to look at it, Fred.
Yes, I will, I'll be sure you have plenty of time. Now we have eighty? Yeah, you too.
Good to see you.
Yeah.
I thought, oh, you talked, you talked to him, there's no really.
Yeah, no problem.
I wouldn't abstain then.
Alright, um, we'll move, we'll move on to, uh.
Well, yeah, you wanna make a motion to, you want a motion to continue that?
No, it's not a hearing.
Eighty-one P, it's just an agenda item. So he doesn't need a vote.
Thanks, Fred.
Um. Eighty-one P for fourteen Lundville.
Who's Mark?
Mark Darrell, Allen Engineering Associates. Here for Kim and Randy Ball.
This meeting's moving so fast, I, I can't even, I need to write down my notes.
Don't complain about that, right?
No, really.
Jack has it on the screen there. I'm sorry, Dylan does, I have.
Hold my credit.
That's why it's easy now.
Hey, Jack, Jack only does that under, uh, duress.
I have, uh, the Form A and the fee. Copy of the plan.
Yep.
Share here.
Yeah, Damon and Alex, you know what?
Yeah, alright, there you go. Thanks, you know what, I'll, I'll go over the.
Yeah, alright.
Abstaining from this, I think I have to kind of give you an idea what that looks like.
Absolutely. No worries, yeah, so.
A lot of bit of frontage. So, actually, I guess Simon's is four makes.
I don't know.
It's awful.
I need.
For real, I'm driving around.
But anyway, so.
So this is a fourteen acre piece off of Lundvale Road. It is owned by Kim and Randy Ball. They have a, uh, current house that sits in the back of the property and that is gonna be split off from a second lot, which is south of the property, so the perimeter in purple shows the entire fourteen acres. The lot to the south, which we enumerated as lot two, will have ten acres and the existing house will have four acres. Uh, the Balls are looking to downsize, they have, uh, their kids are graduating from, uh, high school and college and they're looking to downsize and they're looking to build on lot two and keep the house, uh, at fourteen Lundvale in the family as well. So, the gray area shaded, uh, is the driveway access easement. So they're gonna share a driveway because it is quite long, so it's to not just duplicate a driveway running down the entire, a parallel with the existing driveway and they're gonna split off, uh, right at the end of that gray hatched area and build their new home in that location. Uh, we've been kind of estate planning with the Balls for probably two or three years now. We had the wetlands delineated, we've had soil testing done with the Board of Health. Uh, we've, uh, done the perimeter survey, so uh, they're at a point now where they wanna make the official lot split and then move forward with the septic design and.
Okay, has a required frontage?
It does.
Uh, the only stipulation, is there any type of agreement on the shared driveway at this time?
At this point, there isn't, but prior to conveyance, there'll, there'll be a written deed, easement deed written.
Okay. Alright, um.
So I'm abstaining from this, so just everybody knows.
Yeah, um.
Bill, Bill, when you get a chance.
Yeah, go ahead, Jack.
Um, Mark.
Hmm?
Right now, it's how many lots?
It's one large fourteen acre lot.
And it'll become two?
Correct.
And Dylan, can you roll so I can see the top of the screen? And, but there's an existing house there, how are they going to build a second house on lot two if there's a conservation restriction?
The conservation restriction, you probably can't see it, it's kind of highlighted in yellow here in the, in the building. That conservation restriction, now that you can see it on Dylan's screen.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's below.
Oh, I see.
The buildable area is where the text lot two total area is.
So the E, the restriction is on the same lot that the house will be on, but it's demarcated and, and it's obviously recorded, okay? Got it, thank you.
Sorry, could you just display on the map that what's considered fine, probably short. The frontage, two hundred feet of frontage for the existing house lot goes from this point to this point, and then two hundred feet of frontage for this lot. Since we can, yeah.
Yeah. And black, exactly, like I said, yeah, there's another one here.
Yeah.
They've been without two hundred feet there. It's two hundred fifty.
Gotcha.
Nice. So, um, well, it meets all the dimensional requirements, it's got more than, uh, the sixty thousand square feet of upland on both properties. Uh, so it, it meets the parameters of the eighty-one P. So unless anybody had any. No, no, that's not our, that our venue, I you guys will learn, I stay in my lane, what conservation and Board of Health have to do, they get, they do on their own. Our job is to impose the zoning bylaw.
Yeah, I, if that was, um, Jay, um, unless wetlands impedes access to the lot, the, on an eighty-one P, you can't do anything about that, that's up to them and the conservation when and if they ever want to do anything on the lot.
And that's, uh, that's, and that's why it's called approval not required, because
Right.
We're, we're establishing dimensional requirements and stuff like that. Uh, vital access is one of the important things, which this will obviously have. Um, and vital access is determined by an opportunity for emergency equipment to make be able to access the property. Uh, this meets all that criteria, so if, uh, I could have a motion to approve? Do we need to approve that? Yes.
You have to endorse it.
Indoors, not approved, yeah.
What?
Endorse is the right word.
What's that?
Endorse, not approve for the motion.
It's a technical stipulation.
Because you don't need approval.
Oh, right.
Endorse, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Usually, we usually do take.
Yeah, need a little, but it should, you say, yeah, to endorse.
Motion to endorse.
Yeah.
Yeah, eighty-one P for fourteen Lundvale.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi, hi.
Alright, okay.
Everything.
Now we need to, you need to, like, sign.
If you want, just sign, just sign the Mylar, yeah. Put them all together and I can just stamp them tomorrow.
Okay.
Put them.
That's a good idea, instead of us doing it.
They've signed that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I need the, uh, need the, uh.
Did you get a stamp from me yet or not yet? Do I need to?
She's on that stuff.
I know you ordered it, I didn't know if.
High cost.
Okay.
So now we can plagiarize your signature, Eric.
I went right away, Eric, to that point.
Yeah.
I want to make sure I didn't have to sign tonight.
She's a girl.
I look good, you guys got everything.
We're gonna work it easy.
Be happy.
We're going to trouble, feel like three cups in, right?
Well, actually, that'll work, they all, I didn't think it was gonna be, uh.
You guys, they're signing.
I'll get them all straight out, right? I'll get a couple of commercials for them.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, that'll that'll set. And then now, you go, what's your, what's your attorney doing the rest of the work? Anyway. You have to go to the house, which is, I'll, I'll take you to the center, it's done.
Yeah.
Better sign that.
Okay.
Now, that's, there's this Form A you gotta sign.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. If you put it near.
You're a little bit.
Are you gonna stand there for us?
Oh, no, lost people, yeah.
Just, just sign what you need to sign, a little.
I think maybe everybody wants to go watch the Celtics game.
Oh, come on.
Celtics.
By the time it starts.
Sit with the guys on the outside.
That's right.
That's right.
Oh.
Here to you, it's like nine. Oh, that's sorry, please be the slots, put me there then.
Guys, we're going.
It's right on there, so I can, I can, I can.
Well, I can sign that. Okay.
Alright.
So you watched the meeting yourself?
Was it recent?
Yeah, I can, um, send you an email, I'll send you the meeting. We can watch it.
Alright. So guys are ready? You know, seeing if Jack, Dylan, ever drawn this. Twice I've been staring. Uh, great people.
Yes. Okay. That's, that's a good one.
Well.
I said, I didn't make it. Okay.
Alright. Next item of discussion is the intermunicipal agreement. Um, the intermunicipal agreement for, uh, the planner and assistant planner. Um, just so I can explain it. Uh, we share the services of, uh, Jack and Dylan with two other communities, Millville and Uxbridge. Um, it's something that, um, was worked out through CMRPC and ended up being a, uh, in my opinion, a, uh, they've been a valuable asset to the board.
Yeah.
Um, so what we need is, I need a, a motion or a recommendation to approve, uh, to s, to send a letter to the select board and approving of, um, the continuance of the intermunicipal agreement.
I'll make a motion to, for a recommendation to continue the.
Services. The services of, uh, in, intermunicipal agreement.
Yeah, what Bill said.
I'll second you.
I can, uh, I can just start reading the motions if.
Yeah, yeah.
You can just say.
Big words, I don't have it in front of me.
Or you can just say some move when I do.
Okay.
Alright.
You're second?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Eric's.
All those in favor? Hi.
Thank you for the services, so you guys are great.
Well deserved by the, and Dylan, well deserved by the, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, uh, just, just so the board knows, I stopped doing Millville back almost a year and a half ago, so I just do Uxbridge and Menden.
And you're okay, we're gonna catch you soon.
Yeah. Thank you.
Someone's gotta get that shit.
I.
Thank you very much for everything you guys do.
Yeah, really.
Thank you, Dan.
Certainly, Jack and Dylan have made my job easier since you guys came.
All of us, right?
It was, uh.
Um.
Not having my decisions any longer is a great answer.
Alright, uh, we want to deal with, uh, what's the.
Is it last time, is eighty-one P for Uxbridge Road? Um, do you guys like, can you explain this? A tad confusing, but it seems that you're moving a lot, man. But, um, I'll let you guys come up and explain yourselves.
Good evening, guys.
Good evening. Do you have a, uh, copy of the plan?
Oh, my little one, could you guys bring, oh, on the screen, perfect.
Yeah, you expect us to see that? Why don't you bring that up?
Right here.
Oh, alright.
I like to put it on the table so we can all.
No, why don't we just look at it back?
Hey, Bill, I now understand this, it is a little busy, a little too busy for my liking, but I understand it now.
Oh, yeah. I, for everybody, and, and kind of.
Oh.
Dylan and I went over it before the meeting. And I pretty much understand what he's trying to do. So I want to ask you one question, are these, both these, the thin lot, the one you added to, are they both in your name?
Yes.
Personally?
Yes.
Yes. Well, really, by zoning by law, they would become one lot anyway.
By zoning.
Two, yeah, two contiguous lots owned by the same owner, but would, it would automatically assume that anyway.
Well, we got a twenty foot strip, what's that strip in the middle?
That, that's what he's adding to lot sixty. So he's actually increasing the size of lot six.
Correct.
So, and he's erasing, for some reason. This must have been one time, two parcels.
Yeah.
The other one.
If Sussis happens, too.
So the.
Great.
Twenty.
Lot was two. Yes, I think, I think taxes, three, three separate tax bills on it, and the Sussis office with being fifty-four in the middle is, they want it gone and so.
It cleans it up.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
Yeah, so we're also removing that, uh, with the line in the middle um, of lot fifty-eight.
Yeah, you're going from three lots to two.
Yeah, they're going.
Yeah, so you're not, yeah, you're not making one continuous lot, you're doing.
That's true, it looks like you're going from four lots to two.
Well, that's the confusing part, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, so, um, because it's so confusing, I'm, I'm gonna just read the motion.
And it's just because it's, 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 because it's an assessment.
Yeah. Yeah, they're just cleaning up.
Years ago, they did.
Mess, but like I said, by zoning by, by law. Lot sixty and the thin lot, possibly should have been become one already. Um.
Yeah.
So.
Well, it's not combined, eight, six.
Um.
You're still gonna be a lot.
Yeah, fifty and sixty are gonna be the lots. Yeah, fifty and sixty are gonna be the lots. Possible A is joining Lot Sixty and we're just delineating the, uh, parcel fifty-four. Delineating that line and mark, mark the old parcel fifty. Alright, so. Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm, soon we put the motion up, we'll open for discussion. What is that terminals you use?
Indoors.
Yeah. A motion to endorse, um, eighty-one P for. Joining possibly with Lot Sixty and removing the divide, the divide, division line of parcel fifty-four and fifty-eight.
So moved.
Thank you. I will now, I will now open up discussion to the community or any board members if they have a question. Uh, sure. Come on up.
Peter Lyman, sixty-six, Buckwood Road.
Yeah.
So, um, our understanding, it's all thing, but people who know better, that this should be going toward the zoning board.
Well, I just read, I, I just informed you that in the zoning bylaw, two contiguous lots owned by the same person automatically come, become one. So it wouldn't need to go to the ZBA.
No, I think there's a better explanation, Bill.
Yeah.
The, um, lot, uh, the existing dwelling, number sixty, is, does not have enough frontage. But they are giving it more frontage, so it's making it less non-conforming. So it's certainly appropriate.
Even though it's still non-conforming.
Correct. Though it's still non-conforming.
The board couldn't make it more non-conforming, but they can make it less non-conforming.
Yeah, and, and, and also the fact that within the zoning bylaw states two contiguous lots will join.
And, and there, uh, any action on that dwelling, you know, and, uh, a barn or an extension would have to go to ZBA because it's still non-conforming. But this isn't about that. This is about making it less non-conforming.
Yes. So it's still, is this still eighty-one P?
Yeah.
Okay, so what if these lots, the, the timing of when that, subdivision will all come into place and the age of the lots? Does that come into play here or cannot be grandfathered? Cause that's my understanding.
Well, I guess there, there is an argument that, um, I, I don't know the history. But, uh, number sixty may have been created before zoning. Um, and that would then make it illegal, non-conforming. I, I don't, I don't know where we're going with this, but, uh, the board has every, this, this is more than an appropriate action for the board.
At, at the, at the end of the day, we're, we're not here to try to put four more houses in there. He's, they're trying to clean up a lot line, so he's not paying taxes on three lots that he's never gonna put another house on, you know what I mean? So realistically, he could go in there right now and, um, may, correct me if I'm wrong, Jack. He, he's got to, if he's paying for two separate lots on Lot Fifty-Eight. And.
You're gonna build on that, cause this is only.
Well, that would be non-conforming too, and he'd have to get a variance, et cetera, et cetera.
But I'm just saying that, that he's not doing it to try to build another house or add more. He's just trying to clean up the lot lines, so he's not paying taxes on something that's.
Yeah, and in fact, there'd never be a question about that anymore.
Yeah, if you have concerns, he's gonna, uh, build something or do something. Like you said, they, he'd have to go to ZBA to do that because it's a non-conforming lot right now. Um, and, uh, but this is just a matter of, uh, like I said, it's, it's contiguous lot, uh, contiguous owners anyway. So, I mean, he, you know, and like Jack said, he's making it less non-conforming. He's not making it non, more non-conforming. So he, he, he doesn't have to prove a hi- any type of hardship like that because he's increasing the size. So.
It's that the concern is, restor concern. My concern was that, is this the right process to go through planning board first before going to ZBA?
Yes.
That's the point I was trying to make.
Yeah.
And, well, I'll take that a further. He would, uh, if, if he does nothing with, if this passes and he does nothing with the new lot with the existing dwelling, but chooses to do something on Lot Fifty-Eight, that, that has appropriate frontage and it can be built up as of right.
You, so you get anything else? I mean, at the end of the day, you would probably, if you were to do something on that lot and say you were there to raise the house, you would move it, probably center it in the lot or whatever you are going to do.
Yeah.
To make it the sidelines. Meet the requirements.
But that would take, uh, uh, if we're talking about number sixty, that would take a ZBA action to do that.
Oh, fifty-eight, if he was to raise that dwelling and.
Is there a dwelling on fifty-eight?
Yes.
Oh, oh, I didn't know that.
And, and that, and, and it doesn't, it's closer to the lot line, so.
Oh, there.
Say that he wanted to do something, not that he would, but if he does, he could, he would, would, would have to, if, if you didn't go to zoning, you use the same footprint. But if you did, you would move, you would, you know, make the sidelines.
I, I didn't see that. Uh, so with that, the lot is conforming and the dwelling isn't. And anything to be done to that dwelling would take ZBA action. Unless he just built it on that exact footprint. Um, that's recent case law. Um, if he doesn't move one inch off of that exact footprint, say it burnt down or he demolished it. Uh, then he would be okay as of right. But if he chose to move an inch some way, then that would take ZBA action regardless of the lot size.
Thank you. Any other questions? Sorry, Bill.
Oh, that's.
Come on up, state your name.
So if someone owns all three lots.
I can't hear her.
Well, you can't.
Three lots, but then wouldn't it be, if it's all under one person's name, then it isn't one lot?
Because I should have explained that. Because it already has an existing dwelling.
Okay.
You can't combine those two lots.
Okay.
But if they got a piece of land here with nothing on it, it should have been considered contiguous with one of the lots previously. Usually the assessors office will deal with that, um, trying to clarify it. And I think that's, that's how this all came about. The assessors office, they're having three or four tax bills on this thing. Yeah. Yeah. So, um, and the assessors office has a right to enact that. The contiguous lot there. Um, so basically, I assume, uh, Gene had called and said, you know what? You own this lot and this lot, they gotta come together.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, that's what, uh, that prevents actually people trying to sort out an additional building lot. You know, say, let's say this had a hundred feet and trying to squeeze another house in. It usually, uh, el- eliminates that.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so there's, there's a motion.
Yeah, and we need a motion.
There was a motion, Eric, get the motion.
Alright. Can we second that? Okay.
Jay, second it.
All those in favor?
Alright, alright.
Alright. Yeah, and I, I have one more, uh, thing of order.
So you can say that, Eric. So who, who, Eric, who, Eric can make the motion?
Okay, you got one more?
Yeah. Sorry, the Form A, so there, I put it in there. Yeah, got the stamp?
Yeah, I think the same thing, yeah. Just do the My Law and the Form A.
Yeah, Bill just said what the motion would be. I'm glad.
What does your name, sir?
Oh, okay.
That's going alright. You? Has, uh, see, I'm thinking he's blasting over there too. I thought, keep tabs doing, right? Yeah, that's good. Might as well do it while they're making the noise next door, alright?
I, Jack and mine. And I have one item from the agenda that came in at the last minute. Um, and it's a, uh, it's in reference to, uh, uh, an additional grant I will be obtaining. Uh, hopefully anyways, if we can get all the paperwork in. We're, we've been offering a grant to, uh, CMRPC to assist us with rewriting the subdivision rules and regulations also. So I will, uh, I just need the board to agree. Um, there will be a seventeen hundred and fifty dollar, twenty-five, which is twenty-five percent. Uh, the town has to give in twenty-five percent of the, the cost. So that comes to seventeen hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll make a motion.
So what is that?
What's that?
What, what is that?
The subdivision rules and regulations.
Or what, where does that money come out of? Is that like the planning boards?
It's a federal grant. It's a D, what they call a DLPA. Um, that CMRPC, what, what CMRPTs goes out and they, and it's not just for Menden. They, they do it for a lot of towns. But they go to the state government and they say, you know, we need funds for this.
Yeah.
And the state will create a fund for it. And then, uh, CMRPC will work to get towns. We, we still gotta be approved, but I think they think it's a slam dunk with all the other zoning work and stuff that's going on. So.
So you're saying that they pay for three quarters of it, we pay for one quarter?
We pay for one quarter.
Okay.
So.
Gotcha.
Wasn't a gender item, but it was an item that, uh, he had in the last minute, especially where it doesn't require.
Forty-eight hours.
Yeah.
I will add, Bill, I, I know we'll get this. We need to have Jeff Walsh involved somehow. We'll have to.
Oh, yeah.
Work a deal out somehow to pay him, but Jeff Walsh, uh, Eric is our peer engineer and.
Right.
We need an engineer to have eyes on this, not just CMRPC or ourselves.
Any zoning regulations, Jack, I send to Jeff before we, they go to town floor.
Well, I, I meant subdivision, yeah, yeah.
But even the zoning bylaws, I, I send to.
Oh, really?
The board is, the board has a, uh, enough funds that we can pay, uh, Jeff, so.
Absolutely, yeah.
And we have more than enough funds to pay for this. So it, uh, it's, um, obviously another great opportunity for us to correct the wrongs of the past. So, um, if I could have a motion to approve that, I'd appreciate.
Make a motion to approve the, the funds. Move forward with the CMRPC.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, you wanna be on TV?
All those in favor?
My helpers are here.
We got one motion left.
My favorite. Thank you, guys.